Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this meeting this evening. Help us all to make right judgment in all things here that we're doing. And we ask your blessing on each member of the council. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, so did everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November 25th.
Second.
Are there any discussions? Hold both.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Minutes are approved as written. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I got a few changes. Under 10C number three, we need to add ET, Heating and Cooling, on that. For a plumber's license.
Did you say EP is a special thing though?
Yes.
Correct. And then under 10C number four, for dance license. We're gonna remove the caboose.
Okay, so dance license says that the caboose is restricted.
Well, there's nobody, there's nobody to get a dance license then, so.
So then, uh... What's that?
Ten, he was just asking, I said 10-4 is just gone.
Correct. And then, we need to add 10F. A short closed meeting for wage discussion for public works. Which would carry into 17A under closed meeting also.
So yeah, do you wanna move that first at the end of the meeting right now?
Yes.
Yeah, we will, it'll be a closed.
Yeah, it'll be, it's, so 10F would be copied into 17A.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? You want to vote?
Schoens?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. The agenda's approved as amended. Does anybody have any, any conflicts of interest to advance on the table? There again, we'll move on. Public comment, any work from the public? Want to comment on anything that is not on the agenda?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, please, uh, let me take your names and please hold the conference for three minutes.
Okay. I'm Elton Jordy and our property is at 460 Madison Street here in Tracy. And we're in the process of moving. So, um, something happened to our water softener. It got like stuck on in the flush mode or whatever. And used a whole lot of water. So, um, just for example, um, my last bill from, that I paid last month was for one water unit because I'm only here like eight days a month because we're moving. And because of this water softener malfunction, the usage was 39 units. So then, um, my previous month was 2850 as far as water usage and 2440 as far as sewer. So, this bill that I'm going to pay now is 16150 for 39 units of water. And then likewise, the water going out, um, 15360. So the total bill with everything else, including, um, you know, the other things like, um, the trash pickup and stuff like that, comes to $334.26. Whereas my total bill last month was $72.06. So this water softener cost me a lot of money. And so I have, I've taken care of the problem by unplugging the water softener and turning, turning the knob so it's not in that flush mode anymore. But it ran probably over a week because I only come about, uh, four times a month to Tracy. So that's why it accounts for so much. And I was talking to, um, the lady in the city office about the bill. And she said, what's bad is that when this took place, this is the October, that's one of the months that they set aside for, for figuring out the average for the coming, for the year. So, she said, you'll probably be going up from one unit to 12 units on your next bill. And I guess what I wanted the council to consider, I don't, I didn't know how this worked. So I probably should have been on the agenda ahead of time, but, um, if they would, if they, if it could be put into the computer, the September amount of one unit to go into the average, rather than 39 units to go into the average? Because with me being here only eight nights, eight nights a month, I'm only using that one unit. So, um, I can pass these around so people can see. I don't know if you need to see the previous month and this month's bill?
Anybody wanna see?
I don't need to see them.
Okay, alright. So I realize you can't act on this tonight, but, so. How, how do I proceed? Do I come back to the next meeting or what do I do?
How can January 13th be?
Yeah, I don't know.
Better we can just contact. We can just contact Pastor Jordy too, I suppose.
There's no reason we can't take it up under Mayor Council Communications and give a preference, so. They can stick around to the end and, and we'll discuss it at that point. Or Shane can contact you tomorrow, it's up to you.
Um, which, which would you guys prefer? Do I stick around till the end of the meeting?
We always love an audience, but it's up to you.
I guess if I can be helpful, I guess I should stick around.
Never hurts.
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with you on this, but looking at our agenda, it's probably gonna run fairly long, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody else.
Doesn't look like it.
We got, um, Chris, can you get it down in five minutes?
You bet.
Real quick, just a couple of resolutions. So we still haven't received any comments from USDA rural development on the, um, on the plans we submitted back in July for Phase 3A2. So we're kind of waiting, we're hoping to get comments first before we started the assessment process, the statute 429 assessment process, but given that we're getting late in the year, we should get that going. So the two resolutions for consideration are the preparation of the feasibility report, which essentially is similar to the other phases that we've done with the, with the USDA rural development. We've done the PER, so all the technical information of the feasibility report is done. It'll be a brief cover letter that provides the updated cost estimate and has some certain language that the statute requires. But that's just kind of a checking a box on the statute 429 process for ordering the feasibility report. And then the other one is calling for a hearing, this would be the improvement hearing. And we're proposing the January 27th council meeting at 6:45 for the date of that hearing. So those are the, and then, uh, as part of the feasibility report, we need to look at the proposed assessments and in previous projects, the cities identified a couple of council and staff members to kind of form a committee to, to look at the project costs. And there's always a few just weird things with each project and make sure we're applying the city's assessment policy correctly. So, um, those two resolutions and then if we can maybe identify the people we need to get together to discuss.
Has 3A2 been funded yet? Have we, we have, that's in that?
Yep, so 3A2...
I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure.
Sure, yep, yep.
So that's part of that last bonding that we did.
Right.
I was part of the last discussion on assessments, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, who you want, but I'd be willing to do it.
I think it was you, Tom, sorry.
Does anybody want to follow up to it, if you can?
I would.
We had two last time.
We had two.
Tony, if you wanna handle that, that'd be great.
Need one more then, or?
Up to you guys, yeah.
You and Dimmers last time, right?
Yep. You and I did it last time. But somebody else wants to do this.
Can I, can I give it back? Can you do that?
I'm fine with that.
So Tony and I will, uh, go do it.
Okay, so we'll reach out, assuming these resolutions pass, we'll reach out with some times to see what works to get together.
Okay.
Now that I know that those are all funded, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 201977 ordered in the, uh, report for 3A2.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote.
Towel?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201977, order and report passed.
I'd also make a motion to approve Resolution 201978 for an improvement hearing to be held on the 27th of 2020 at 6:45.
Second that.
First and second, that's, uh, 27th of January, yeah?
Yep.
Any questions to the discussion for that? Go ahead and vote.
Schoens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye, resolution 201978, uh, according to the improvement hearing is approved for 27th of January, 2020. About 7:00 PM, was it?
Yeah, 6:45.
6:45.
Do you need other, these other resolutions too, or the payment?
Uh, no, that's for the airport project.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Different one.
Um, and the only other thing, I don't think we need any action for tonight, we're thinking maybe the week of February 10th for the open house, um, that we did in the gymnasium here last time. So maybe you still have to check on availability and so forth. The week of February 10th, we're thinking for the, that's where people can come up and ask specific questions.
Look at the maps and see where they're at. That's gonna happen. That was pretty productive, I liked it.
Yeah, I liked it a lot. It's, people, uh, we don't mind answering the same question twice if it provides us...
Was it like 3 o'clock?
I think it was like 3 to 7, something like that, yeah. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. At this time, vote for the Public hearing of truth and taxation.
Am I here for the truth and taxation hearing? Come up and...
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
My question is, the valuation of my house, um, went up significantly. I have a 21.6% change in my taxes. There, there was no assessments made, no street assessments made. No changes in, um, in any work that was done on the house, nothing put into the house. But yet the evaluation of the house is up, um, 20 grand essentially. So, I guess I'm, I'm wondering how that's possible.
That's what Ken has best answered at the, uh, what's the name?
Equalization.
Equal, Board of Equalization. The, the county went through and changed how they appraised all the homes. I gotta, I forget how he explained, a new program, or?
Yeah. They have the program that they use?
The program that they used and it affected different properties in different ways. I think that might be what happened there. You could take and, to the assessor's office and have them explain why they jumped your value so high. And then if you feel that that's not an accurate interpretation, you could bring that information to the Board of Equalization. And that will, they'll be able to act on that somehow, or at least refer to the county if, if we can't handle it here.
Okay.
But the, that's, that particular jump is best handled at the, at the Board of Equalization in the spring, it's usually in April.
Yeah, they did that several months ago and I, I'm starting, I can't see who's talking, who, who, who I'm talking to?
It's Ken Wet. Ken Wet.
Okay, so, I, I understand what you're saying because, um, they raised 950%. So I know exactly what you're talking about. And as Tony said, um, that was the county that they made a change in their software that they used. And, uh, it affected several of us in that way. So, um, you have to go through the board before they, and their assessor's office, like Tony said.
I, I guess I understand the, the need for more taxes, you know, I, I understand that, but, uh...
That was quite a jump.
You know, we, we don't have an extra $500 laying around, so, uh...
The upside is the levy that that was forecasted on, on, our portion that we control was what we gave them the first time around, 11%?
No, he goes...
10.6 or something?
Oh, yeah, you were right, it was 8, yep.
It was 8, so then we're down, tonight we're gonna announce where we're at as far as,
Yeah.
the actual levy's gonna be at 3%?
3, the 3.33 at the end.
So a portion of that'll be reduced.
Well, the, the majority of the, the majority of the increase is the evaluation of the property.
And that was from the county?
Yep.
Yeah. That up to that.
I would check with the county.
They'll give you some ideas, Ken, they'll explain how they did it. And they'll give you some ideas of what you can use to rebut their decisions. And then they come out even before that board and you get all the legwork done. And then when it comes time for the board, they can, depending upon the swing, we can act on it here to a point. If not, then we have to refer to the county. Jeff and Mark, he'll help you out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Any else? Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to do?
Uh, close the hearing.
And approve resolution.
At this time, we will close the public hearing for truth and taxation.
Which one, B?
Um...
Yes.
Go ahead and go to, uh, the final commission year-end report.
Make a motion to approve it.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um...
Make a motion to approve?
Second it.
First and second, discussion or question? Vote.
Towel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmers?
Aye. Uh, the final commission year-end report is approved as written. Come on the charter commission, everybody get down to read that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the charter commission year-end report.
Second.
First and second, discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. The charter commission year-end report is approved as written. Um, keep going, we got a couple more questions, uh, cigarette license, trace booth driving, safety, that's the door. Okay, keep it going, devil.
I'll make a motion to approve the licenses as long as fees are paid.
Second.
Okay, do a second?
Yep, Tony did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, first and second, discussion? Uh, vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Uh, cigarette license, trace booth driving, safety, like the store gate, the dollar general is approved as long as fees are paid. Sport liquor, Sunday license, a caboose five, five, traffic eagle.
We make a motion to approve as long as fees are paid.
Second.
First and second, if there's discussion? Okay, vote.
Schoens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Sport liquor, Sunday license, a caboose five, five, traffic eagle is approved as long as fees are paid. Well, no, it's, uh, plumber's license, south, speeding, law of the day, both, one, T H, warming, E C, heating and cooling.
Motion to approve the plumber, plumbers licenses as long as fees are paid.
Second.
First and second, discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Towel?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Plumber's license, south, speeding, law of the day, both, one, T H, T H, warming, E C, heating and cooling is approved as long as fees are paid. Um, on sale, malt liquor, Casey Land.
Motion to approve the on sale malt liquor license as long as the fee is paid.
Second.
First and second, discussion? Vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. On sale malt liquor, Casey Land is approved as long as fees are paid. Okay, at this time, or no, still got five minutes.
Yep.
Motor vehicle driver's license, uh, DUR, 2020.
Who is our DUR?
DUR, so April Lipti, um, is who I'd recommend for the DUR appointment for driver's license motor vehicle.
Okay, well, I'm, uh, I'm okay with the phone, probably.
Make a motion to appoint April Lipti as a DUR appointment for the motor vehicle and driver's license.
Second.
Okay, second?
Who did it?
Who?
Okay, um, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Motor vehicle driver's license, DUR, 2020, April Lipti. No on contract.
So I put this up for the council approval for the rates for 2019, 2020. They are the same as they have been the last two years, so, um, it's up for approval and I'll give whoever can call and go on on it.
Make a motion to approve the contracts.
First and, first and, no change?
No changes.
I'll second it.
First and second, any discussion? Vote, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Uh, no on contract, phrase is approved. Uh, I'm gonna close radio, just end of the...
I make a motion to go to a closed session at the end of the regular business to discuss employees' wages.
Second that, oh, go ahead.
Discussion? Please vote.
Schoens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. At the, the closed meeting for discussion of employee wages will happen at the end of the normal week. Um, resolution 201972, sale of real property, all by the EBA.
We'll have to wait till the hearing's done.
Okay. Resolution 201973, affirmative, 2019 test, wet, cold, cold, 21. Do you have time to be heading this, or?
Um, maybe we should wait on that one.
Okay.
Let me do E, charter.
Year-end transfers, you got a question left?
Yeah.
Resolution 201974, approved year-end transfers.
These are what, what's in the back of your 2019 budget book. The end of the year is when we do all the transfers for the current year. So it's just, uh, need approval from the council to move on with that transfer.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 201974 for year-end transfers.
I'll second that.
Don't hurry the second, is there discussion? Uh, go ahead and vote, please.
Teigs?
Aye.
Towel?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201974, approved year-end transfer is approved. Okay, at this time, here's our 32nd agenda.
And the answer is?
All right.
We figured seven o'clock somewhere.
Yeah.
There we go.
So, uh, we will open the public hearing of sale of E D A property, tomorrow, six thirty.
You wanna?
You need to say anything?
Refuse anything?
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Just need to explain why we have a public hearing and what we're doing.
Well, a public hearing is for the approval from the city council to sell one oh six Third Street to, um, a party that plans on putting a, uh, a laundromat in, in that building.
Really just authorizing the E D A to sell it.
Yeah, that's all we're doing, it's no name, we don't have to discuss really anything with it, so that's all we're looking for.
Are there any stipulations or difficulties on the sale yet?
Not on the sale itself, but in the purchase agreement, there'd be a few things that'll be put in there about what goes in there and how it goes in there and that type of thing. But I'll do that in the purchase agreement, and that'll just be shown to the E D A board, uh, before, before it's okay. But alls I'm looking for is an okay tonight, and that's it.
Okay, can I get a motion to the second?
We wanna close the hearings.
Oh, sorry. Close the, uh, okay, if there's nothing else, we will close the public hearing at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty nine, two thousand nineteen seventy-two sale of the property by the E D A.
Second.
Person second, any discussion? Go to vote, please.
Peterson?
Hi.
Tao?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi. Resolution twenty nineteen seventy-two, sale of grass market, don't take it, we pay, it's approved. Resolution twenty nineteen seventy-three, confirming the twenty nineteen tax, will be collectible in twenty twenty.
Um, everything should be accurate, uh, if you guys are comfortable with proceeding as written, um.
This has been changed to twenty twenty.
Okay, so she has changed the, the resolution to be signed tonight to be collectible in twenty twenty, this one says twenty nineteen. So that dates right.
And that's, yep, that's good.
Um, it ends up being a three point three three percent increase in the levy.
And that's a thousand, one hundred and eight point two?
Gonna find it here. Found the new one, but not the old one here. I'm not finding the preliminary percentage.
It was eight point eight or something.
I know it was eight point something.
Yep.
Four point eight point two or three, I believe.
Yeah, I wanna say it's a lower eight, but, um, the final, uh, proposal is three point three three. And that would include, um, we did have, uh, some debt service that was paid off this year that ended, and then we had to add some in there for, um, there's a fire truck that needed to be paid for, um, that hasn't been covered by FEMA yet, so just to cover us, we did include, um, some dollars in for that, otherwise we could probably cut it down a little more, but we want to be covered on that, so. If FEMA comes through, then hopefully we'll, maybe hopefully flatline it next year, but. Sounds good.
We did pass to that, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, that was, uh, approved back in eighteen. One of the flood vehicles.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen seventy-three for the twenty nineteen tax levy collectible in twenty twenty.
Okay, is that a first, is that your second?
Second.
Person second, any further discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote, please.
Shones?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Tao?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi. Resolution twenty nineteen seventy-three, approving the twenty nineteen tax, will be collectible in twenty twenty, and three point three three percent is approved. Resolution twenty nineteen seventy-five, approving the twenty twenty second.
You'll see a resolution in your packet, um, it's kinda like a condensed summary of the budget, um. If you got any questions on that?
My only question, saying, on that page, on the general fund, the one you got listed as other, what are some of the other uses on that?
I think like, uh,
If you, if you ask, uh, the gentleman, what year?
Under the general fund, the last line item is other, I was wondering what were some of the others identified in that?
Okay, thank you.
I knew this when I did this last time.
How to pull up what it is.
Think like, uh,
I gotta be told more than twice before I can remember it.
Well, if I recall, I mean, we kind of discussed that one, what, were we going to, um, break some of that out, be more specific?
Well, the way the county wants it's a little different than, this is how, this is their format, um, trying to think of what isn't done here. Uh, cemetery would be one.
Okay.
Oh, it's public enterprise, so this is just
The cemetery is under public enterprise.
So it's, uh, unallocated would be one of them. Other financial uses would be another one. I wanna say the multipurpose center was included in that last time we looked at this.
That's down here.
Yeah, but it's funded by the general fund. It's like a transfer zone. Then anything that the general fund funds, like the, say, like the aquatic center, that's, that's included in, in recreation, but there's a transfer out in
Transfer, yeah, that, that's why, okay.
And that's where it's gonna show up.
Yep.
Um. It's kind of, it's kind of a mess of a bunch of different things, but those are some examples, street lighting.
Yep, there you go, all right.
I can get you a list if you'd like me to send it.
Give it to me in writing, I'll remember next time.
I'll write that down.
Okay.
Or we'll at least have it in our drawers.
Yeah. The account codes are changing, where they move things around, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's growing, that's why, but when they close some of the accounts, it's gotta come from somewhere, so.
Yeah. But I can send you some information on that.
Well, that being said, then I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen seventy-five approving the twenty twenty budget.
I'll second that.
Person first, second? Can you, uh, recap that briefly, uh, Dana, the, the annual assessment is checking?
Would you want me to recap what other comes from?
Yes.
Um, a lot of it's other financial uses and unallocated, so like, unallocated would cover, um, instances like our audits, uh, property taxes, um, we still have some property taxes to pay as a city entity, um, things such as that, or if it was something that really doesn't have a home, um, to be brief. And then some of the transfers out to help the public enterprises that don't fall in one of those other categories. It's kinda like the catch-all for whatever doesn't fit, you know, your general government's gonna be your, your admin, your legal, your mayor council elections. Um, you know, public safety's gonna be fire department, ambulance, um, and billing inspection falls under that. Police department, and then public works would be, um, public works department, um, and that's kinda split between parks, which would fall under recreation, and then most of recreation's aquatic center, and then the library, and then everything else kinda falls under that other category, so. It's, it's a lengthy list, um, from what I recall, um, that's kinda how it's broke down. It's, it's real generic, and it's, it's kinda hard to match sometimes on, you know, what money goes to what department when the statement comes in, but, um, that's how it's, how it's broken out.
Okay, thank you, is there any other questions or discussions? Go ahead and vote.
Tao?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi, revolution twenty nineteen seventy-five, approving the twenty twenty budget is approved. Resolution twenty nineteen seventy-six, granting service communications, take a franchise extension through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
For the sixth year in a row, I'll make that motion to grant that. Second.
Person second, any discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote, please.
Teigs?
Hi.
Tao?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi, revolution twenty nineteen seventy-six, granting service communications, take a franchise extension through December thirty-first, twenty twenty is approved. And the revolution twenty nineteen seventy-nine, approved change order number one for apron improvement. That's, uh, that's not at the airport, yeah.
There we go. All right, so, the change order for the airport apron, um, what it was, is there was a tile that wasn't draining, um, that was under the apron. Um, nobody really knew it was there or where it went, um, we did track it down, um, was not, uh, draining, I think it was, well, it does say in here, it's three hundred and twenty feet that ended up going to tie into an existing tile to get the, it's kinda like the under, under grading of the, of the, uh, apron, so if we didn't have that drain, we would end up having, uh, frost boils in our new apron, so, um, to help with the drainage come through, um, we're thinking that tile was probably there before the airport was, but, um, everything's under the, under the apron is new, and so, that's what they had to do there, anyway.
They didn't tear off the apron, they replaced it or what?
No, they had to do it during construction.
It's already done.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen seventy-nine.
I'll second it.
Person second, discussion or questions?
Under discussion, there should be enough, in the ten percent on the, it's the
If there isn't, um, if that isn't expense, we could run through M and O too.
Okay.
So either way, we're covered to some degree.
Okay.
That's what would've fixed it if
If it wasn't a foreign project.
Would've found out the hard way.
Any other discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote, please.
Peterson?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Tao?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi. Resolution twenty nineteen seventy-nine, approved change order number one for apron improvement is approved. Resolution twenty nineteen eighty, approved payment to debt for work completed on E D A improvement.
Any questions on that?
Well, I guess, I guess you have to pay for it, right?
Right. And that closes it all out.
Yep.
It's all, it's all done out there, right?
Yep, it's all seeded.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty.
Second.
Person second, discussion or questions? Okay, go ahead and vote, please.
Teigs?
Hi.
Tao?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi, resolution twenty nineteen eighty, approved payment to debt for work completed on E D A improvement is approved. On the calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage in Sanford, and approve the November fourth planning commission meeting minutes. Second.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, discussion or question? Go ahead and vote.
Shones?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Tao?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi. In the four count payable without breakthrough beverage is transferred out, and approved November fourth, twenty nineteen planning commission minutes, approved. Breakthrough beverage?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Person second, discussion? Vote please.
Tao? Peterson?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Tao?
Make a motion to approve Sanford Health.
Second.
Person second, discussion? Vote please.
Tao?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers.
Hi. Sanford Health is approved, so, does anybody have anything under mayor and council negotiations?
Yep, Pastor Jordy's request. I don't see that that would be any issue to roll it back since it was a malfunction.
Yeah, I mean, it's just to average it out for the year, he's just asking it for it to be an accurate average.
Is that something Peggy or whoever can just do simply enough?
Yes, it's a simple matter of reworking the
Yep.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
Wouldn't hurt.
I'll make a motion that we set Pastor Jordy's average back to one unit.
For the sewer.
For the sewer and, and water?
Just the
Just the sewer? Just the sewer, okay.
Water's, water's monthly, sewer's average, so...
Okay. We'll do that.
I'll second it.
Person second, question, any discussion? Go ahead and vote, please.
Tao?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Peterson?
Hi.
Teigs?
Hi.
Mayor Demmers?
Hi, voting to, percent average to one, the last concrete is approved.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, anything else for mayor and council communications? Okay, at this time, we will close the normal hold of the meeting. After a short recess, we will open the closing.